Okay. Good evening, everyone. I will call this meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education meeting to order, and we'll start with the roll call. Joseph Abdella.
Here.
Greg Kava. Vicki Salon. Stephanie Kolnick. Angela Maturulo. Alex McNauton.
Here.
Justin Ongley. Jen Pody.
Here.
Jane Sargent. Peter Tagley. Mary Weber. And our new Christine Wadeig.
I was thinking.
So actually, first on the agenda is a formal welcome to our newest Board of Ed member, Christine Wadeig, who was sworn in on July 2nd. I had the opportunity to meet with Christine about a week ago, and it was a great conversation. You have your new board packet, so you're official now. She was given her device at that time, so she's all set. So please join me in welcoming Christine to the board. I'm sure she's going to be a wonderful addition and a great contributor, so welcome. And if anyone wants to say a few words, or even Christine, if you'd like to share a few sentiments, by all means. You have to. Remote, got it? Okay.
Thank you all. I'm really excited to, I don't know if this is even.
It is.
Okay. Um. I, I'm really excited to join the board. I have three kids that are in Region 12. One is here at Chappaq going into 7th grade. I have another one, two others at WPS. One is going into 4th, one is going into 3rd, so obviously, I'm very invested in the region and making sure that the quality of education remains as high as it is. We're very impressed. We were transplants, we were weekenders until the pandemic, and then made the full-time transition and, you know, compared to New York City public schools, obviously, this was really a breath of fresh air. And I think that there's even more that we could all do collectively to build on the successes that have already been achieved by the region. And I guess I should also add, even though we were transplants as full-timers, my family has had a house in Washington for over 50 years, so I, in a lot of ways, grew up here in the summers, and I'm very attached to the area, and I look forward to continuing to raise my kids here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this evening, as you know, is the organizational meeting to elect officers of the board, and as customary, I will start by reading the Bylaws 9121. "The officers of the Board of Education shall consist of a Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer. Such officers shall be elected from the Board membership at the annual organizational meeting, the first regular Board of Education meeting held each July, and shall remain in office until new officers are elected at the next annual meeting unless such officers cease to be members of the Board of Education. If there is a vacancy among the officers during the course of the year, the Board membership shall act promptly to elect a new officer to fill the vacancy. The Superintendent of Schools or designated agent shall call the annual organizational meeting to order and serve as moderator for the election of new Board of Education Chair at the annual meeting held each July. If the Superintendent of Schools or his or her designee is not present, the Board will elect a temporary Chair by a majority vote. The temporary Chair will preside over the meeting until the Board elects a permanent Chair. The new Chair will take office immediately upon election. The Board will then elect a Vice Chair, a Secretary, and a Treasurer. The new officers will take office immediately upon completion of all the elections. Board members shall vote by paper ballot, and a majority of the total membership of the Board shall be required to constitute election. If there are more than two nominees, and on the first ballot, no nominee receives a majority vote of the full membership, the nominee receiving the lowest number of votes shall be removed from the list of candidates before balloting again. Upon motion duly made and seconded, an officer of the Board may be removed from office by a 2/3 vote of the total Board membership, voting by ballot. In the case of a tie vote in the balloting for any officer, such tie shall be broken by law." So at this time, I will open the floor to nominations for the Board of Education Chair. A motion made by Alex. And seconded by Angela. Would anyone, including the nominee, like to address the Board regarding this nomination? Including the nominee?
It's been my privilege to be your Chair for the last five years. When I became Chair, our then Superintendent Megan Bennett asked me, did I have a vision for the region? That I have an idea that we wanted to pursue? And I said, look, I said, I would like for us to have, to provide the schools that every parent in Connecticut was to send their children. And sure enough, we made that happen. Within a very short period of time, we received, in addition to our ag science applications, in addition to others, we received that year 266 students who wanted to, whose parents wanted to pay tuition to come here, even though they had no other right to be here. They were from towns that were not feeding into Region 12. And the following year, we had over 200. So we had literally, in a scope of a couple of years, two to three years, become the school district that every parent wanted to send their kids to. It was a successful thing, and from the changes we made to to have physics first and begin with that, to the I admit hounding that I had, that I made to the superintendent to get the planetarian cleaned out. We had a planetarian, and yet it was filled with junk and old file cabinets, and it was not used as a planetarian anymore. And I, I got after her until she got it cleaned out, and then the Board was good enough to spend $100,000 to digitize it. We created a science curriculum around planetary studies and around astronomy, and just the year before last, we had first student leave here, go to college, and study actual physics. You see, the reason why we wanted to do these things, the reason why I wanted to make us the best school is not to be the best, who cares? It is to provide opportunities for kids. Kids are the reason we get up and and that was what we were trying to do, and we were accomplishing it, accomplishing it in a big way. We had a little bit of a reversal there for almost a year, before we got back on track, before Lori got us back on track. And we are now working from on the inside on such matters in curriculum and everything else in order to, in order to put us in that position. We have increased our standings. At one point, we had Kent Booth was the number-one elementary school in the state, and we had Washington Primary, I think, was somewhere in the top 10 or 11, or it was somewhere around that. And Burnham wasn't ranked because it was too small. And, but if it hadn't been ranked, it probably would have ranked near the very top, not challenging Booth for its thing. We have a high school that's out of 170 or so high schools in the state of Connecticut, is ranked in the top 25 consistently. We are performing at a high level, and we are creating opportunities for kids. Another thing I told her I wanted to do is I wanted to start using our television studio, our professional television studio, to start televising our athletic contests and let the kids do the play-by-play and the color commentary. Because we wanted to increase opportunities in broadcasting, we wanted to to expose the public to our fabulous athletes, because there is no way a high school this small should be able to field multiple teams who are finishing at the top of the state. And this past year was just an amazing year, and it's about time that these folks, you know, got out there. And the other thing we could have done with that, that we wanted to do with that, was to be able to have kids who are here from ag science or another tuition-in situation where they're, they haven't grown up with everybody, and maybe they're not as well-known, to possibly, for some of their athletic pursuits, in the seasons that their team is not playing, to be able to be interviewed, to be able to get them out there, and to be able to try to bring kids together and try to do that sort of thing. So this was what we were attempting to accomplish. I think we largely succeeded. And I think there's, there's a lot to do. Now we get to the point where I think everybody is a bit on edge, and I get it. I mean, there's a lot of uncertainties in the world, and there's a lot of uncertainties in this country about where we're headed. I think there are people who are concerned that because of what's going on at the, at the national level, we're likely to face increasing numbers of people in our community who decide that they want to come in and and talk to us about what books we put in the library, and what, what bathroom that transgender students get to use. And those kind of issues may very well come here. They certainly, certainly the issue of book burning came to Newtown. We had people, the Newtown Board last year had to deal with with people who wanted to remove books from the library because of what they said. And there's nothing that is more anathema to education in the academy than to be deciding, having someone other than the proper person decide what books are fit for our kids to read. Someone with a training background that he has read the book before they do that. But I know there are people who are concerned, and I know there are people that perhaps have issues. I also know that there's the possibility, and there's some, some words about this board possibly being divided over some of these issues. And I know that this, this decision tonight is is going to be a weighty decision. And I've given it an enormous amount of thought, an enormous amount of thought. What I don't want to do is have a situation, and it appears to me right now that we're very likely to be casting lots for this decision, based on my intelligence. And because of that, I think that at the end of the day, there's a lot of division, there's a lot of divisiveness that occurs, and there'll be people who are extremely disappointed. I don't want to be the cause of that. If people want to go in a different direction, then I think they should go in a different direction. And so, as much as I am honored, Alex, to have your nomination, and Angela with the head of your second, I think that for the good of the organization, and for the good of the Board, and to be able to pursue a better direction, perhaps, I am going to decline to accept the nomination. I'm going to decline to run. And it grieves me greatly, but I think that, I had planned that this would be my last year as Chair anyway, that I would be off the Board. Probably in another year, my term is up next year, and I plan to sort of retire into the sunset. I sort of wanted to have that last year to be here to try to get some things finished that are in process. We're in the midst of labor negotiations right now, and we've been working on that very hard. But I, I, I just think that at this time, I the situation might be better served. And I don't know what I have to offer at this point in the board, because I have really put it all on the line for the last five years. And I, I really think that probably what, you know, it's, it's time for someone else to, to take the leadership role. And I will remain on the Board for the next year until my term is up. After that, I'm not sure what I'm going to do, but that's where we are, and I thank those people who have voiced their support for me, and I I think it's time for something new. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your, your confidence.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, then I will again open the floor to nominations for the Board of Education Chair. Recognizing Stephanie.
I'll be the first also to say thanks, Greg, for your years of service and for all of your support of the district. I do want to put forth another nomination tonight, and Jennifer Pody.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would anyone, including the nominee, like to address the Board regarding this nomination?
All right. I wrote something down in very large print, because I can't see anything, so. I deeply appreciate the nomination. This is my 12th year serving as, on the Board of Ed and three years as Vice. I have a deep passion for Region 12 and the community, and always have the students' best interests at heart. It's challenging to have 12 people agree on every issue, but I do think that we're all here for the same reason, and that's for the kids. We have a very busy year ahead with lots of work to be done. That includes a superintendent search, a deep dive into how we deal with the three elementary schools. And with that being said, I feel it's important to reinstate board retreats so that we can strategize and work collaboratively. I feel it's important to have all hands on deck. Every single one of us has a skill and a talent that should be utilized and celebrated. I want everyone to feel included and have a seat at the table. And I believe we will get significant work done. I will work hard to promote collaboration among the Board and create strong communication among the leadership of the three towns. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for Mr. Kava, and I thank him for his dedication to the students of this district. The Agri Science Program would not be what it is without him. We have an amazing group of people serving on this Board, and I look forward to making things happen together.
Thank you. At this time, are there any other nominations? Sensing none, do I have a motion for the Board to close nominations and move to a vote for Board of Education Chair? Do I have a second? Hey, you're getting ballots right now? Right now, they're voting? I ask if there were any more nominations. Right now, they're voting? Okay, so a majority. We have nine yeses for Jen Pody, three abstentions, and we have a new Chair, and congratulations. And I will now turn the meeting over to you.
So the next office is Office of Vice. Do we have a nomination? Vicki? Second? Moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Okay. Don't we have to, a motion to close the nominations? Is that right? Any other nominations other than Vicki? I mean Angela, rather. What? I have to say what three times? Any other? Yep. So that was one. Going twice. Any other nominations? Third time's a charm. Any other nominations? Okay. There are motion to close nominations? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstained? Cast your vote. So now I'll put on the microphone and say that again. 11 yeses, one abstention. Congratulations, Angela. Okay. The next office is for Secretary, the Office of Secretary. Do we have a nomination?
I just want to say, I've enjoyed being the Secretary. I've, I've done it several times over the last eight years that I've been on and off the Board, but I'm ready to pass that torch on to somebody else with a strong voice who wants to call roll. So I don't know if there are any other nominations out there, but if there are none, I will nominate Justin Ongley. Second? Just.
Justin. Seconded by Vicki.
Yeah.
Who's moved and seconded? Any other nominations? Going once? Any other nominations? Going twice? Any other nominations? Okay. There are motion to close nominations? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Cast your vote. Oh, I didn't sign mine either. I didn't sign mine either. Do you want them back to sign them?
I. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody who didn't sign it, can you send them back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just take those back. And I did not sign mine, but I didn't take it, yeah.
Unanimous. Nice job, Justin. Unanimous. Well done. Well done. Moving on to the Office of Treasurer, do we have a nomination? Mary? Second? Jane? Moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Going once? Nominations? Twice? Nominations, three times? Is there a motion to close nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstained? Cast your votes.
And I have, look at, look at. Yeah, I just, yeah, I think so. But you have them all pulled out, so you can do that.
So you'll just pass it around afterwards. Okay, great. So we have eleven yeses for Alex, one abstention, and Danielle is gonna pass around the unsigned ballots at the end of the meeting, so we are legit. So thank you. Congratulations, Alex. That too. Okay. Good. The consent agenda. The minutes of the Board of Ed meeting for June 24th, 2024, everybody got that sent or later in the day. Does anybody want to take these off the consent agenda? Anyone? That was the 24th. That was sent later on this afternoon by Debbie. Yeah.
That's what I do.
So anybody want to take this off the consent agenda, or are we good? Hearing nothing? Means it's been adopted. Yes? Okay. Have to make a motion to approve the minutes for the 24th special meeting? Second? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Abstained? Okay, they've been adopted. Thank you. Words and recognition. I think there's a committee sign up that's supposed to be passed around. Is that right? Make one and pass it around. It's a list of the committees. Take a look at them. From my understanding, you can sign up for as many as you would like. And if you're interested in being a chair, you can write that down as well. And, yeah. Typically, we do them on Mondays prior to the meeting. Five. Depends on the chair. But we have a new committee, just to look that over, because the Agri Science Committee has been added to it, so.
And there.
I would believe so, so you would have to sign yourself up again. Okay?
And some do meet on other, on other
Other times, like the Agri Science.
For the board meeting.
That's right. At Advance is different. So, for sure. I'm just, I didn't mean to look at you when I said that, for sure. Yeah. Okay? Yeah. Yeah. Because you're working in the middle of it. Yep. Understood. Absolutely. Yep. Yep. And I will look it over and appoint committees and chairs and I will make sure I get that one taken care of ASAP. Yep. Okay, super.
Yep. Well, I did put this in my Sunday highlights, but I thought I'd just say it again. We had a wonderful three-day retreat with our our leadership team across the district and central office. And this year, we invited our teacher leaders who are part of Carrie's K-12 Council, Teaching and Learning Council, to the second day. And that's the first day was all around strategic planning, so that we really could dig into the first year of commitments and priorities across all four priorities, so that we're ready to go at the start of the year. And then the second day was hosted by Jonathan Costa from At Advance and Abby Waldron, his colleague. And they focused entirely on Vision of Learner, which is what we're calling it. It's really Portrait of a Graduate. And that work is critical or critically connected or aligned to the NEESK accreditation. So it really isn't just high school related. It really is a K-12 connection. And they, they just really did a wonderful job, I think, giving a really strong understanding of what that means from kindergarten all the way through senior year and what the attributes should look like, both academically and socially emotionally. So there'll be a lot of work still going on that, but it was a really good start. And then the final day, which was Friday, was really around the New Teacher and Leader Professional Development and Evaluation Plan. And that is, you know, obviously, every district is mandated to have that. And so they, we wanted them to calibrate around a one-point rubric, which is now where we are in terms of teacher evaluation. So all in all, the feedback was extremely positive. I think it was probably one of the first times here in this district, we brought in our instructional leaders, our teacher leaders and staff who are part of that council and that, you know, I said to them, you're the pioneers now moving a lot of this work forward. So it really was a great way to invest their time and our resources. So really happy about that. Aside from that, we're, we're getting there with staffing. As I said, it's a bit difficult now at the end of July. There are still a few openings, especially in World Language, which is where the shortage area is. We're trying to come up with creative ways around that, but just so you know, we're getting close and I will keep you updated on that. I really believe that by the time school opens, we will be fully hired, so. Right now, our appointments, Alicia Augustine, Accounts Payable Coordinator at Central Office. And I know that makes Nicole very, very happy. We hired, as I said, our final armed security officer for Booth, and that's, his name is Timothy Berry. Jessica Davis, Chemistry Teacher at Chapag. We're bringing Leslie Holzgrube back. It's a shortage area, so a retired teacher can, can work. And she will be the World Language Teacher at Chapag. Emily K. Dash, Elementary Teacher at Booth. Joe Kelly, Joseph Kelly is also an armed security officer hired for Washington Primary. Jenna Raymond, Art Teacher at all of the elementary schools. Robert Saucier, he is the Armed Security Officer who was hired for Burnham. Kimberly Schram, who will be the new Reach Preschool Teacher at Washington Primary. Michael Watt, he's our Math Teacher at Chapag. He's our Interventionist. And then we had some resignations and retirements. Obviously, Jennifer Boriga, who was our data, is our Data Specialist at Central Office. And she will be gone as of August 31st. Mary Clark, our School Nurse at Chapag. Marilyn Abrio, our Administrative Assistant to the Director of People Personnel Services at Central Office will be retiring. And we have a leave of absence, Jennifer Rotunda at the elementary. She's an elementary teacher at Washington Primary. And those are your updates. Thank you very much.
So there's no old business or new business, summer meeting, so adjournment at You do. What's that? I didn't see it. Go. Sorry. No, shoot.
So the Bridgewater Fair is coming up, and I thought if we could maybe have a booth for the region at the Bridgewater Fair to give out, you know, we have that that end-of-year thing that shows where our kids are going to college and how well they did on their scores. And I know that, I know Burnham at least has a pamphlet about Burnham, it's probably simply sold, but I didn't, I wanted to sort of forecast and see what everybody thought about, I think somewhere between 40 and 100,000 people walk through that fair. And I thought if we could speak to Curtis maybe and grab a table or a tent, then, then we could give the kids community service hours, but they would have to always have an adult there with them too, that could answer questions.
I think it's a great idea.
Do you want me to reach out to Curtis to find out? I can, I can reach out to him.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
That would be great. And if anybody wants to work it, step on up. I'm not looking at you, Alex. You are.
Do you? I could, could maybe put Yeah, I'm not really sure how would we do that, but we'll figure out how to get volunteers to sign up for like two hour.
Yeah.
I'm not really sure who we
It's Friday, Saturday and Sunday, right?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the 16th, 17th and 18th, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know who I would reach out to, but I'll figure that out. There's a book floating around somewhere.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yes, so I'll reach out tomorrow to whoever is the Chairman of the Fair. And then I just had one more thing in the business. So we all attended graduation and it was lovely. We have academic awards. We have an academic award tonight. We have athletic awards tonight. And then I think we even have seniors competition tonight. And then we have graduation and we have valedictorian, salutatory and perfectly appropriate. Thing, not that I didn't like, but I kind of felt bad, was then we gave out two more awards to two more students and we gave out six awards for the top senior project. And it's always kind of the same kids that get the awards and deservedly so. But I think that graduation should be for all of the kids. And I think that if you're sitting there and you're not going to get one of those top academic awards, I think it kind of takes away from you if you're the quote average kid. So I would like us to consider, aside from the valedictorian, salutatory and making their speeches, I think they should, I would like to consider not giving out any awards at graduation and making it about all of the kids and not saying, blowing out anybody's speech.
I love that idea. I also, we've talked a little bit about the idea too, that the graduation, once the students receive their diplomas, there's this there's an after, there's still stuff going on. And I think that the last thing that should be done is, is their diploma. And I know it's, change is hard and I don't know if it's a conversation to be had, but I think that that's a really good point.
I've already started discussions about that, because I thought that was a little unique, I would say, to have more things going on after that. Just, you know, some things happen and they stay that way for a long time. But that's a, I will certainly bring, bring that up to the principal and others.
Yeah, sure. Great. Thank you.
That was it. That's all I have.
So adjourn will be at 7:58, is that right? Forty-eight, sorry. Thank you. I need to make my face bigger on my watch too, I guess. Thank you.